And all rise, so we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is a study meeting we're having tonight, so we don't have to go through some of the items here.
And through the chair, I can start with roll call, if you like.
Okay.
Commissioner Bergman.
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Present.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson.
Present.
Chair David Silverman is absent this evening. Vice Chair Bradley.
Next item is approval of the minutes.
We should probably still give up a comment, just for the items not on the agenda.
Oh, thank you. I didn't realize I'd be chairing this. I just finished chairing the Residential Design Review Committee meeting, which went until three minutes before you all came, so I'm a little flustered here. Public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54954.2. However, the Planning Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report.
Is there anybody?
No questions on that. We'll have the approval of the minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing none. We have a motion.
On any item that's not on the agenda right now? Okay.
It's confusing. So, we're looking at the minutes. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't have any changes or additions to the minutes when I reviewed them.
I didn't either. Shannon?
No.
I move approval.
I'll second that.
I have removal and approval, a second. Approve the minutes of July 31st. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Bergman.
Abstaining.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson.
Yes.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Bradley.
Yes.
Next is the study session, talking about state cannabis legislation and developing local cannabis regulations.
Now, you're doing the presentation.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is that on? Yeah. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Nell Seelander, Economic Development and Housing Manager. I'm just going to provide you with a very brief introduction and then hand it over to our consultants, who have been working on this project with us. So why is this issue before you right now? As you all know, California voters passed Proposition 64, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, almost a year ago in November of 2016. And the state will begin issuing licenses to commercial cannabis businesses on January 1st of 2018, just a few months away from now. So any local regulations that the city would like to impose must be in place prior to January 1st, when the state begins issuing licenses. Over the course of three study sessions before the city council, we received direction on how to proceed with drafting regulations. City council directed staff to ban commercial cannabis businesses within 600 feet of residential zoning districts, and also to ban any retail dispensaries. Council directed staff to begin drafting regulations to permit with strong operational standards and ongoing monitoring for these license types listed here, so cultivation, but nurseries only, manufacturing, distribution, testing, and micro-business with no retail component. And the consultants will explain what each of these mean in a few minutes here. So what's the Planning Commission's role in this process? Cannabis regulations will require amending several sections, several titles of the municipal code, including Title 18, which is the zoning ordinance. And as you know, amending the zoning ordinance requires a public hearing before the Planning Commission and a recommendation to city council. The purpose of tonight's meeting is really just to get the commission up to speed on the issue and share a bit about past legislation and the process for implementing local regulations. So next, we'll notice a public hearing for your October 2nd meeting and present the zoning ordinance amendments at that meeting for your review and for a recommendation to the city council. At that meeting, we'll also share a bit about the other sections of the municipal code that will be amended, but those will not require a recommendation from Planning Commission. And now I'm going to hand it over to our consultants. We have Neil Hall and Sonia Ortega of SCI Consulting Group, and Tanya Sendberg from Placeworks.
Nell, can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Only because you mentioned that the city council had directed staff to ban retail, and that's just not how I read the staff report. I understood that they were going to not allow it for, at this time.
Well, so it'll require us banning it in the municipal code now. It can be changed in the future, of course, at council direction.
I was reading it as they just didn't want to issue permits right away. They were going to wait for this process to play out before allowing it. So then, if, so we're not looking at retail at all, we're looking at cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and testing in micro-businesses?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nell. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Neil Hall. I'm with SCI Consulting Group. And staff, good to see you all. I'm going to give you kind of a background in cannabis, you know, where we're at and what's happening. SCI Consulting Group currently works with three counties. We're working with Tuolumne County, Alameda County, and San Luis Obispo County, and about a dozen cities up and down the state, from Encinitas down in San Diego County, all the way up to Wyreka, at the far north of the state, on their various stages of cannabis implementation. Okay, the arrow to the right, I'm going to give it a shot. Oh, it worked, great. Okay, so, up until 1937, cannabis was actually legal, prescribed by the AMA here in, it wasn't the AMA back in the Medical Association, here in the United States. Prohibition, for those of you who don't know the dates, 1920 to 1933, we were one of the few countries in the world to actually ban alcohol. Somewhat failed experiment. Harry Anslinger was the Assistant Commissioner for the Bureau of Prohibition of Alcohol. And in 1933, when the Volstead Act was repealed and prohibition ended, they appointed Harry to be the Commissioner of the Federal Bureau of Narcotics. And at that time, Harry was kind of building his empire, and he looked around. The Mexican Revolution had been happening from 1910, or up until about 1910. He had a huge wave of immigration from down south at that time, much like the Asian population that we had during the Gold Rush. The immigrants came up and brought with them their drug of choice, which at the time was marijuana. That is not a misspelling of marijuana that you see. That is actually how they spelled it back then. It's taken directly from the Act. But Harry decided that this was an opportunity to go after immigrants who were not popular at that point in time, because of the influx and the taking of jobs here, and in 1937, passed the Stamp Tax Act, which kind of, at that point, stopped the use of cannabis. It was actually fought by the AMA. They weren't vocal enough to do that. In 1951, and then again in 1956, we had the federal government start to get involved. In 1969, a gentleman by the name of Timothy Leary was arrested coming across the border from Mexico with marijuana, and he argued that paying that stamp tax violated his Fifth Amendment rights, and the Supreme Court actually agreed with him. So at that point, the federal government said, well, if you're going to do that, we're going to put it in the Controlled Substances Act. In 1970, it became a Schedule I drug, along with heroin and a lot of other very harmful substances. In 2013, and the reason that there are states starting to do the medical and also the recreational legalization, we had the Cole memo. Deputy U.S. Attorney James Cole issued a memo with eight criteria that if states were allowing medical, there were robust regulations that needed to be followed, that the federal government would not, in fact, go after them. And in 2014, Dana Rohrbacher and Sam Farr, two congressmen, one from Orange County, one from Monterey County, passed the Rohrbacher-Farr Amendment, which defunded the Drug Enforcement Agency and the Department of Justice from arresting or prosecuting people in those states that had robust regulations regarding medical marijuana. That was reaffirmed here in the Ninth District Court in 2016. And if this gets boring, just wave at me. I'll skip through it. Medical cannabis is currently legal in 29 states, so we're about three-fifths of the states here in the United States currently allow medical marijuana. Recreational is legal now in seven states plus California, so we're the eighth state. As you may or may not know, there were four states that started the trend, and Washington, D.C. also, and probably Arizona will go in the next election. California, if you look at us strategically, we're kind of surrounded by states that have legalized recreational use or adult use, non-medicinal use of cannabis at this point. California's history in 2015, I'm sorry, Prop 215 in 1996, so 21 years ago, we legalized cannabis here, and Dennis Perone was kind of the force behind that. He was out of San Francisco, went to the state legislature because his partner was infected with AIDS and couldn't eat. The only thing they found that was helping at that point to stimulate the appetite was cannabis. The legislature, you know, turned them down there, going to legalize it, and so he, they wrote an initiative here in California. Prop 215 is an initiative by the people. And unfortunately, as is the case with a lot of initiatives written by the people, it lacked a lot of the regulations. And that was, the MMP, the Medical Marijuana Program, was enacted in 2003 and 2004 in an attempt to further regulate it. But then, until 2015, when we had three bills, we had AB 243, AB 266, and SB 643, co-joined to further regulate cannabis, and they did a great job, actually. That was in 2015, and it put in place regulations for all the different aspects of cannabis at that time. And you'll hear me refer to it as cannabis. That is the term that is now currently used by the legislature. It's the term that people feel is a little less prejudicial than marijuana, but it means exactly the same thing. In 2016, SBA 37 was further enacted to help the MMRSA for medical marijuana, and then in November of 2016, we had Prop 64, which was voted on here in California. I believe 57% voted in favor of legalizing adult use of cannabis. In 2017, and so what we had were two kind of disjointed sets of regulations, one for medicinal and one for non-medicinal cannabis. SB 94, which was originally a trailer bill by the governor, was approved by two-thirds of the legislature this year, and it provided integration of the non, and they've, it says "medical" up there on our slide. Actually, they've changed marijuana to cannabis and medical to medicinal, which is probably a good clarification, I think, when you look back at the way it's done. The, and it's called Mauchers. I refer to it as SB 94. It's a lot easier to say. It created the Bureau of Cannabis Control. That's been renamed several times. That is a branch of the Consumer Affairs here in the state. It allows vertical integration of the five different activities that we'll see later on of cannabis, eliminated transportation licenses and combined them with distribution. It allows some onsite consumption. I always look to see whose eyebrows are going to get raised when I say that. And it provides a SEQA exemption for localities that approve of any cannabis activity with a discretionary type of review, not a ministerial type of review. The big three businesses in the cannabis industry are retail, cultivation, and manufacturing. And as Nell said, retail is not on the table here in San Carlos. However, some limited cultivation in the form of nurseries and manufacturing are under consideration, as are testing and distribution. Testing and distribution are mainly support activities. There's not a lot of money, a lot of profit to be made in those two particular industries. They're a lot like other distribution, testing industries would be. This is a picture of a dispensary, if you haven't seen one. This is Harborside. It's down in Jack London Square area. I have been inside many dispensaries up and down the state and up in Canada, just doing research on these. Harborside is one of the largest in the United States. It's a very well-run facility. It looks a lot like that. This is what cultivation looks like. And again, you're talking about nurseries only here, but you can see, these are how the plants are grown. This is a picture of a manufacturing facility, and I will tell you now, this is a much overblown photo of a manufacturing facility. One of our clients is the city of Kalinga. They have allowed manufacturing in Kalinga, and it could all be done in a room about the size of this room we're in now. It doesn't require a lot of space. This is a distribution warehouse. It is not for cannabis. We don't envision a cannabis warehouse will be this big either. You're not talking about that much quantity of cannabis, but it's typical. It's what a distribution facility would look like. Testing facilities, I've been to over eight of them. They're all very well-run. Most of them have an ISO certification. The state will require that of any testing that goes on, and they are requiring testing of both medicinal and non-medicinal cannabis at exactly the same levels. That is one of the big problems that we're going to face as a state moving forward. This is what cannabis looks like when it's grown inside. You can see the tall colas is what they're called. Those are the flowers. That is where the psychoactive ingredient resides in the cannabis plant, most of it. So these are the directions that the council has given to ban retail at this time, to allow manufacturing, cultivation, distribution, and testing, and micro-businesses without the retail, but to regulate them. And we do have some fairly voluminous regulations in place, as does the state and does every city and county that we work with. This is a new industry, and, you know, if it's overregulated to start with, it's probably not a bad thing. It's been, you know, operating illegally for many years prior to this. There are two client types. There is medical, and then there is the non-medicinal. Again, use the word medicinal now. These are the six key elements of cannabis implementation. Community research and outreach, health and safety regulations that go with it, what type of application process you're going to have. It can be fairly complicated. There tends to be a lot of people applying for work in this industry. It's a new industry with a lot of money involved. We absolutely recommend full-cost recovery. If the city implements a tax at some point in time, and we believe they probably will, that tax should be available to all of the citizens of the city, not just the people that voted for cannabis. And that means that the cost of this industry needs to be borne through regulatory fees. We see them up and down the state, from between $10,000 to, we did the ones in Kalinga, $60,000 a year to operate a facility, to cover the costs of monitoring and compliance of those facilities. Revenue is from the tax ballot, and then we do the monitoring and compliance there as well. And that is where we go into those facilities and make sure that they are following the letter of the ordinance, and that can be done by staff. It can be done by contracted organizations, but it needs to be done. So, community research and outreach. There have been three city council study sessions up to this point, and also a survey called Shape San Carlos Survey. When we're drafting the regulatory ordinance, we want to make it local and unique. We don't come in and tell you what you should do. We ask questions to find out, and I will tell you now that in every single place I've been, I have not seen one that is the same as the others. Everybody has a unique idea about how they want this done. But we do ensure that we, that there is compliance with state and local regulations, and we want it to dovetail with medicinal and non-medicinal use, and any local ordinances, which address the local land use, which are very familiar, and the health and safety priorities. Then we talk about the business application process, that full-cost recovery of regulatory fees that I was talking about, possibility of taxation, and then monitoring compliance. The drafting of the regulatory ordinance is a process. We're going through that now. It generally takes a while. We hope to have a draft at some point in the very near future, but we have a lot of things that we consider, both in terms of land use, because there's a land use component of this, where are you going to locate these particular businesses? And then there are health and safety considerations, which are a separate issue, and we can use, you know, local preferences as a guiding point, and also the state regulations, which are voluminous. There are over 100 pages of state regulations, and we're expecting another 200 pages in individual regulations from the Department of Public Health, the Department of Food and Agriculture, and the BCC, the Bureau of Cannabis Control. But they regulate things like security and safety and labeling. The track and trace means that they track that plant from the time it comes up in the ground until the final point of sale. If there needs to be a recall, if there's a problem, they want to be able to address that immediately, likely with any other product. The application process and processing, again, incorporating state regulations, ensuring that the business operates safely, and sensitive to community preferences. Full-cost recovery of those regulatory fees, again, this is to protect any tax revenue or other revenue, so that the recovery fees are paid by the businesses. In other words, if they want to do business, they have to pay for that monitoring and compliance, so that the community is not burdened with that cost, and that frees up any taxes that you decide to implement in the community for the benefit of the entire community and not just a few people. Those fees have to be Proposition 26 compliant. We regularly do those fee studies for communities that are doing implementation, and everything is Prop 26 compliant. So, taxation, we're still waiting for the council to give direction on that. We don't have any final word there. Monitoring and compliance, we do things from sitting outside of a dispensary and counting the number of people that go in, and then go in and check their cash register to see that that's happening. We do live-time video monitoring. We have a facility that's used for the state of California, where we have several contracts to do the live video monitoring. We feed that back to the city, and they can then follow up on the things that we see. It's along with our comments, of course. We inspect the premises. You have issues like disposal, you know? Where's the cannabis product that's been used going? You have to track that. We want it on camera. We want to know where it's going, and we want it hauled away and destroyed. And also, community communications. We want to hear complaints. We want to be able to answer questions and direct that back to the cities that we work with. Implementation in San Carlos, we're looking at a January 1st deadline. Obviously, we won't go right to January 1st. That should be a holiday for all of us. I think it's the Rose Bowl, but we're shooting for sometime shortly before that. We are looking to have your regulatory fees for full-cost recovery in place and setting up a process for you to do the monitoring and to ensure that there's compliance with the regulations. So here is the current timeline. We feel fairly confident that we can do this. We've met all of our timelines where we've already done the implementation. We believe this can, very doable here. You've done a good one. Okay, so that was my long presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or direct ones that I can't answer to staff or to--
I have several questions, if you don't mind. Is it okay? Do you mind? Okay, so, the first thing that comes to my mind is, I mean, we're talking about growing and cultivating. I mean, as far as I understand, my understanding so far is that these are, from at least a financial standpoint and a banking standpoint, sort of semi-legal, and a lot of times that they can, I don't, I've heard that they can be cash businesses, and therefore they are more risky and they're problematic from that standpoint. Could you speak to that a little bit, and what, you know, what's being done to try to mitigate any risk it would be to city and citizens? If you could clarify what CBD is and how that plays into this, you know, these regulations? And then, on the micro-businesses, I'm assuming they'd be selling to retailers that aren't in our city, if we allow micro-businesses to grow here? Is that what? Okay, so those are some of the questions I have.
Okay, so I'll go with the first one first, and feel free to interrupt me, staff or anybody that wants to jump in. But basically, with the cash part of the business, the Board of Equalization, as you know, is changing title. The new entity will probably be the one that will do the tax collecting. But they have been charged with, by 2018, January 1st, they will need to be setting up a satellite office up in the Emerald Triangle, where there's truly a lot of cash taking place. San Carlos probably will not have as much cash or not as big as those areas, but they are setting up a satellite office to start taking cash payments. BOE, as it exists today, has 22 satellite offices up and down the state. You can file an exception to turn your money in as cash to each of those offices. Now, whether or not that'll be granted, and especially with the influx of businesses that'll happen, is hard to say, but they, the state does understand that, and they're working towards that. Now, that doesn't mean that every business is a cash business. Particularly, the retail tends to be. Some of the cultivation and manufacturing businesses have been able to partner with credit unions that are not federally insured. We see a lot of that up and down the state. But that is really going to be coordinated between staff and the businesses as we move forward. We also see where, in the smaller cities like Shasta Lake, where they actually have the business people meet them at the city's bank, they issue a receipt for it, and it goes straight into the bank. And so there is no exchange of cash outside of that. We also see a lot of cities that have armored car services that actually do use the cash to do that. Your second question was about--
CBD.
CBD. CBD is the cannabidiol. It is, it is the oil. It is typically, it is non-psychoactive. And I say that because I have worked with the testing firms, and actually, the acid in your stomach over time, if you take CBD, it will become psychoactive to a certain extent, although 99% of the time, it is not. That oil is what they're finding works well in seizures particularly. That is where we get the Haley's type of stuff. And what's interesting is that that is, has to be grown for that. You see different strains of the plant. Of course, the recreational people want it to be high in what's the THC, which is the tetrahydrocannabinol, and that is the psychoactive ingredient. The CBD is, actually operates almost the opposite. When you have high CBD, you have low THC, and vice versa. So the trick is really to find facilities that will supply, you know, a higher CBD type of oil. It's a very, you know, useful type of medicinal product right now, but there is no control over that, other than it has to be on the label of the product when it's sold.
It's part of the, what's being proposed is that the testing will actually start to regulate the percentages of the different types of elements of the cannabis, that you know what percentage is THC, what percentage is CBD, and all that. I mean, I read that that was a problem in Colorado when they first legalized it, that they were making some really bad stuff, making people sick because they didn't, it wasn't regulated. Is that part of California's plan to make that, you know, FDA label?
It is, and I will say that they've already done testing on California products. Steep Hill, which I believe, the lab in Berkeley is just up the road here, did a test of about 70 samples of California cannabis. 93% of them would have failed under the regulations that the state is proposing. So yes, that is exactly correct. Now, they aren't going to regulate the amount of CBD or THC. They're going to regulate the different types of microbiological contaminants that could be in it, or residual chemicals from the manufacturing process, those types of things. But they will have to have on the label the percentage of THC and the percentage of CBD. Those two are the two components that must be on the label.
Thank you. And the micro-businesses selling to--
Yes, you have no retail allowed here. A micro-business that is allowed here will have to distribute to an outside retailer.
One final question that I'll open up. I saw a slide earlier that talked about transportation. I mean, is that, is it, they're having to have license to drive cannabis anywhere in the state or, obviously wouldn't apply across state lines, but it's within the state? So, okay.
And it's distribution now. They've just combined it into distribution. It must be an employee of the distributor. And there are a huge variety of rules about how they transport that product. So that, I believe the police chief was here, I saw him earlier. If he pulls over somebody with a carload of cannabis, they're going to have to have a manifest. They have to file a manifest electronically with the state before they even move it. And then they have to carry a physical copy with them under state regulations.
Thank you very much.
This might be a tad bit beyond the scope of our discussion. If it is, we can talk after. I'm just curious if the state regulations are dealing with the environmental concerns, particularly in the Emerald Triangle regarding the growing and cultivation of marijuana?
Yes, they are. And I was in Sonoma County a week before last at the California Department of Food and Agriculture where they were, they were certifying all of the cultivators in Sonoma County at that time for pesticide use. But they also have very stringent regulations in the Business and Professions Code, NSB 94, regulating diversion of water in particular. That's a huge issue. And in talking with different people from Fish and Game, you know, they use a lot of generators. That means they're leaving behind traces of gasoline a lot of times. And so that is one of the most severe punishments that the state has put into SB 94 is for violations of that.
I have a couple other questions, though. They may be more appropriate for staff. Just, so, just to clarify our roles. Our role essentially then will, is only in determining which zone these businesses would be allowed to operate. Am I, am I understanding that correctly now?
So, City Council provided direction on which areas of the city to permit these uses. The recommendation that staff had provided at, I believe it was the second City Council study session, was that uses like manufacturing might be permitted in a zoning district that would permit that use. So you have like with like.
Generally, right.
So those are the types of things that will be in the zoning ordinance amendments that we'll bring to you for review and recommendation.
And then if I read the staff report correctly, unlike other zoning examples or instances, operating these types of businesses will never be permitted by right. It will always require a special permit or a CUP. Am I, am I understanding that?
So the, the regulations that we're all working on drafting now essentially set up a special permit for, yeah, these types of businesses. In theory, that could change in the far future.
Sure, but-
The way it's being set up is that all of, all of these uses will require an application process that's discretionary.
Thank you.
Jesse? I don't have any questions.
Mr. Hall, you started out by explaining the three aspects of the process. We can understand the cultivation and retail business aspects, but I'm at a loss to figure out what the manufacturing means. Can you detail that for us?
I would love to. Actually, it's a fascinating process. And it is, again, one that is being highly regulated. The equipment to do it now has to be engineered. Everybody got a real bad flavor for manufacturing because people were using PVC pipes in their homes and butane. What happens is the, the active ingredient in cannabis is soluble in a lot of chemicals, butane being one of them, hexane, a lot of different things. We see those used in other industries. They're used for deriving soy oil, for instance, or lavender oil or rosemary oil essences from those plants. But what happens is the, the plant material is put in a big tube. It's about this big round and the one that I see in Colinga is about 12 feet high. And then it is, there's a, it's sealed and butane is pushed through it. And butane has a very low evaporation point. So at about 70 degrees, all the butane evaporates and all that's left is the THC, the active ingredient of the cannabis in kind of a mucky, ugly, dark green and black form. And that's then put into like a centrifuge type of machine that slings off all of the color and you end up with this gold or clear colored, pure THC product. And that then is sold in dispensaries. These days, you, in the old days, of course, and I'm a child of the 70s, you know, people smoked joints. You could tell if somebody was using marijuana from, you know, half a mile away. It stunk to high heaven. Now with these vaporizers, they're the size of my ink pen and there's a little cartridge with that oil in it that goes inside and it heats it up to just about 400 degrees, 392 degrees is where it vaporizes but doesn't smoke. And so you release a steam that has no odor. But that has become the very popular way. In addition to that, that oil then can be used and mixed with edible products to be homogenized into a cookie, a candy, a drink, whatever, you know, somebody's going to ingest. But the manufacturing process, they're big stainless steel things and after that butane evaporates, it's captured so that none of the butane goes into the atmosphere. It has to be sealed and has to be maintained by and certified by an engineer. But, and then the next batch goes in. And so that's kind of how the manufacturing process happens. And as I say, you could, you could probably process enough to do most of California in a room this size with, you know, several of those pieces of equipment.
Thank you for the explanation.
I hope that was good.
I have a couple more questions that are probably going for staff. One is about the odor. I mean, is there anything wanting to be written? Are we considering any kind of ordinance on odor? Because I mean, if I was living in an apartment building, I don't know if I'd want to be subjective of that. So I don't know if the city's considering that or if that's going to be like an HOA thing that's happened.
No, it's in, it's in the ordinance and it is very specific. And I will tell you also, from being in these facilities, all of them have amazing odor control. You could walk around the outside of Harborside, you could walk around these manufacturing facilities. They not only use filters in the air, but they have kind of a reverse vacuum system so that when a door opens, the air doesn't go out, it actually gets sucked back in. They've gotten very, very good at this. You would not know unless there's a sign up that there is a facility next to you in most cases. And if you do, there is odor control written into the regulations so that there's no detectable odor from outside the facility.
One more question. I know this one's for staff. Having to do with, and there might be parks and recs, I'm not sure who handles signage, but since, since, you know, the law was passed, I mean, I live up near a park and there are, there's been an increase of people coming up to the park to smoke. And I'm, you know, I, I think, and I know it's illegal to actually do that in a park, but I don't think our signage really spells that out. So who, who would we take that out? Because I think that it might help to have it reinforced. Because I, I mean, I, like I said-
Good evening, Commissioners. Greg Roethlis, Police Chief. In terms of smoking marijuana in the park or smoking anything in the park is against the city ordinance. So it's really just a matter of giving us a call and, but people are not allowed to smoke in parks, whatever they're smoking.
I know, and I actually have called before, but I just think that the signage would be, I don't think everyone knows that, frankly. And I've been thinking that the signage, if there had better signage in the parks that say, you know, smoking of any kind or something like that, that it might help with that. And just, that's why I've mentioned it to staff, it's something we might want to consider as a city, because I think that would, that would help. Because I think that, especially up where we're at, there's, if there's a lot of wilderness and people, you know, and so just I think it would help. Anyway, that's my two cents.
I can bring that to the attention of Amy Newby, our Parks Director and-
Okay, yeah.
And for that suggestion, it's a good suggestion.
Yeah, thank you.
And just to clarify, any public consumption of cannabis is currently prohibited. And anywhere that tobacco smoking is currently prohibited, smoking of cannabis is prohibited. So the law is in place, it's just, again, a problem-
Yeah, I just don't think there's a public awareness of it with the passage of the law. And I think it might be helpful to transition that it be reinforced. But, thank you.
Yeah. You want questions from the audience? Okay. Thank you. I'm, we're now opening up questions from the audience now for you, Mr. Hall, not for us.
I have just one card.
Oh. I see.
Just public comment.
Okay. No questions, just comments. And Yehara Madrikon, are you here? I'm sorry if I mispronounced her name.
I actually just have a quick question for you guys before I begin. I wasn't able to attend the last council meeting, but I did watch it online. And I wasn't aware that they had officially voted. So are they actually banning retail businesses come January 1st? Or are they still kind of, is that still in motion? Because there were still three council members that were, they wanted just more information or, yeah, so I'm just asking if it's actually banned.
I think this is a question for the deputy attorney.
Sorry to interrupt, but through the chair, if you could clarify that this is the public comment section of the item on tonight's agenda. I just wanted to make sure that's clear for the record.
So we're in the public comments part.
And I just want to clarify, it's not a Q and A session. This is your opportunity to make, make comments.
I understand, but I don't know, it's just this-
Relating to that directly, I'm just looking to know if that was banned or not officially.
Do you want me to answer?
Hi, so my name is Al Spay. I'm the Community Development Director. And what the council directed the Planning Commission to do is, is to prepare language and consider language in our codes that would do that. But the council also wants to have more information about it before they make a final determination. So they have, the council hasn't voted and nothing's official yet, but they've given direction to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. All right, I'll begin. I'm here to talk about the benefits of having a cannabis club in San Carlos. In the last meeting, some concerns about safety issues, youth usage spiking arose, as well as objections to having a shop in San Carlos because people can always just drive to the next town for their products. When January 1st comes, people will be able to grow and consume wherever and do whatever they please with it. It is human nature to want things as fast and as easily as possible. Not having a cannabis club in the city will drive people to get it from the black market. And they grow with pesticides and make edibles with childproof, without childproof packaging and use dangerous untested dosages. Those in the black market do not mind selling to minors and will never contribute to this community. Cannabis clubs would never sell to minors because they have so much to lose and would be working against the usage among youth. If you allow one or two clubs on a provisional license or provisional permit to be a part of the San Carlos community, we can use them as a resource and the funds that they provide to educate the youth, eradicating the black market and the dangers that come from uneducated use of cannabis products. Cannabis is about to be everywhere, regardless of having a retail shop here or not. But wouldn't you want an organization that cares for the people of this community to take charge and participate in educating the public? They can give you the tools to succeed in a state where cannabis will be more accessible than ever. Let's take small steps together to make it easy for the people of San Carlos to get safe products and choose to go to the cannabis club in town instead of the person who grows in their backyard. Waiting a few years means slowly losing your local authority and the best way to choose the best fit for your community. If you give us a chance to step up to the plate, we will give back to the community financially, but most importantly, we will educate. San Carlos won the top votes for Prop 64 and all that it included. Listen to what the people voted for. 65% yes on the Prop 64 is saying something. Like Councilmember Olbert stated, the people of San Carlos are reasonable and thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments at this time? Any more questions, comments from the Planning Commission?
I don't have any.
I don't have any questions at this time. I think you all answered it. Thank you.
Any guidance from the staff?
This would be a good time if you have any guidance for us moving forward with regard to crafting of the zoning language. You've talked about some things, you had some questions. So I think we have a fairly good understanding of some of your concerns. But at this point, if you have any final direction or guidance in terms of when we come to you with the zoning ordinance and other ordinances that you want in there, that you want to make sure is in there. And again, we did hear a few things, but I just wanted to make sure that you had your final say on the guidance there. Thank you.
I don't know how you would, I don't know how big of an issue it is. The only thing that I can, I'd almost like favor retail over cultivation, right? But since retail's off the table and it's about cultivation, the thing that really does concern me is just the safety of, of the cash transfer. Because I mean, it's bigger, bigger dollars, right? It's more of a risk and my concern is for the community's safety and that. So I don't know if there's any way or any guidance that we can get as to how we would craft something that would minimize the risk to the city as far as the safety, public safety is concerned. That would be my big concern with cultivation.
I think my concerns are some of the concerns also outlined in the staff report. Obviously, odor control, security, any of the challenges with manufacturing that might prove dangerous. I mean, really, and particularly environmental concerns, I think, come to mind extensively. Just making sure that we're not further polluting our water or our water supply with it would be important parts of the regulation for me.
I don't have any additions.
Thank you. Just as a comment, I picked up my planning magazine from the American Planning Association a day or two ago and found out there was an appropriate article in there, just a couple of pages. So I ran off some copies. Maybe you've already seen it before, but I'll be glad to pass these, these out. So it's a big issue across the country in a lot of states, as Mr. Hall mentioned, the legalization of marijuana, not just for medicinal purposes, but recreational. And it's big business. It makes a lot of money for a lot of people and it's a dangerous business for people who, as was mentioned, they use it unwisely, can harm society, as we know.
I have one other comment. It has to do with visibility of the plants for people who are growing individually. Have we got, have we already come up with, I don't know if you put it in there, whether or not that they can't be visible or is there any, are we speaking to that at all in the ordinance? Since that we're suggesting, for people who are individually growing, personal use, will they be able to be visible outside or do they have to be kept inside or they have to be covered? I mean, is there any, are we, are we looking at that? Has that been discussed?
Yeah, so Prop 64 allows every, you know, at each residence for there to be six plants. Cities can limit that to just indoors. The state law allows indoor or outdoor. The direction that we received from City Council on that item was to ensure that it's not visible from the right of way. So not in someone's front yard. You wouldn't see it from the street or on a sidewalk.
Okay. I think I'm done now.
Any more public comments? I guess that concludes our study session on cannabis for tonight. I appreciate you all coming and the presentation, Mr. Hall, and your work on this with Sylender. Now we have time for reports and correspondence and general information from the staff.
Thank you. We don't have anything this evening to report on in terms of recent City Council actions.
I'll report, there's a citywide wayfinding committee, steering committee meeting tomorrow, which I'll be attending and looking forward to hearing the consultants, seeing the consultants' proposals for some new signs around town. No correspondence and planning, no planning staff comments other than what we heard from Lisa's, so.
Actually, through the chair, I do have one thing.
Okay, good.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but if you'd like, I can give you just a brief kind of update. For the next Planning Commission meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, September the 5th, we will have on the agenda a recommendation for a zoning and zoning ordinance amendment for protected tree classification. And this would be to propose removal of the eucalyptus trees as part of the protected trees. And I think I mentioned this at a previous Planning Commission hearing, but I just wanted to make sure that the commission was aware and that information is available. to make sure that the commission was aware and that information is available on the city's website if you need hard copies of those. Of course, we can give those to you earlier in advance of the September 5 meeting. So if that's the case, just feel free to send me an email, and we'll make sure to get you hard copies of that information, if you'd like those in advance of the regular packet distribution for September 5. And that's all I have.
Thank you for that, Lisa. Seeing no further business, declare the Planning Commission meeting adjourned.